Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for February 9th, 19th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
No.
A vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion to table the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion to table the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Department heads of committee chair updates. We have, let's see.
Two that are scheduled.
Mary Grant.
Mary Grant.
Charlie, I bet.
You are.
Good afternoon, Dan Crapitz, Chair of the Mary Grant Nature Committee. We have a new committee this year. We have myself, my wife Tammy, Bobby Joe Rogers, Ginny DeBauer, Linda Leck, and Laura Daskowski all on the committee. We all met a few weeks ago and we set a calendar for events this year. Spring cleanup will be May 18th. We're excited to be trying to do an organized story walk with the Library Board whom I met with a couple of weeks ago. That's June 22nd. We'd like to try to do a townwide picnic or something like that around July 6th. We're thinking about trying to do a campfire weekend or camping in the park or something like that along with some stargazing. And then, of course, our annual pumpkin carving on October 19th this year. Other than that, we're looking forward to a fun year and getting grounds in shape to go for another summer.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sounds encouraging, great, thank you. Okay, District 2 Roads was busy tonight. Animal Control was not coming tonight, okay. Okay.
So, I mean, if I may, while we're on this, so you guys put out the schedule in the beginning, and I get that sometimes people need to reschedule, but I'm getting to where I'm carrying over a lot, so, you know. I expected the rec, I mean, the cemetery, the cemetery was scheduled for the 12th, we got snowed out, which couldn't come the 14th, I haven't heard from her. District 2, same thing, snow, couldn't come Thursday, something came up tonight, Animal Control, something came up tonight for him. I mean, am I just rolling, I mean, what am I doing here?
Who do you have on for next week?
Right, so we have three, based on the schedule that you approved, there's three every week.
Well, it's almost getting to the point where you can just schedule them on their regular next turn, maybe?
So it's okay for them, if they just don't come, they can skip out? You don't want to tell them that?
No, I don't want to tell them that.
I'm out.
How about we say, when is, which day would work best for you?
And I just got, rec will be here in a couple of minutes, so if we want to get back to him.
Okay. Okay, is there any other department heads committee chairs? Okay, now let's go down to old business. We'll come back to the rec. Road account standings.
So this is another update from the Treasurer. Shows you that District 1 Plowing has a balance of $4,270. District 2 Repair and Maintenance, you can see 1459. That plowing looks like a, oh, no, sorry, let me start over. District 1 Plowing and Sanding has a balance of 427003. District 2 Plowing and Sanding has a balance of 145942. And the sand and salt is overdrawn, $3,731.
And that was a bill that just came in.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, it has been, it's been an odd winter, weather-wise. It's been wet, it's been, you know, a lot of rain and slippery type stuff, so, but it seems like every year we go over with the sand salt, so we probably got to look at doing something there. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, you know, with yesterday, having it snowed all day, it didn't really let up, and it was barely enough to plow, but without everybody out, it was, just made a nice mess to have to plow.
Yeah, you had to treat it. Yeah, you had to treat it, but it wasn't hardly enough to plow, so.
It was kind of a pain yesterday.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Okay.
I mean, I guess what we need to look at with the overage money is 15%.
And we can, I mean, we can get a, you know, the last three or five years, so, I mean, it may be time to increase some of those accounts. I mean, if they've gone overdrawn, I think we've had a, what, special town meeting at least once, if not twice, in the last few years.
Twice.
Maybe it's time just to increase those accounts. I mean, you know you can go over 15%, but if you don't spend it, then it'll go back into the general fund, so.
Right, right.
Let me have the Treasurer pull five years' worth, we'll get that over to both the road guys.
Yep.
They are working on their budget, so maybe we need to increase those numbers.
Sounds good. And that's 15% of the winter maintenance account.
Right.
So basically, it's just those three, those three lines, so, okay. Action Plan Maine Municipal.
We are still working on that. The Fire Department has one item left. Transportation is down to a couple. Like I told you last week, their transportation guys are going to be coming in on Friday to do some of their required online training with me, and then we should be pretty close to having you guys do your inspections before we notify them of the completion.
Okay. Very good. 1920 Proposed Budget.
Any thoughts on the Forester information that I presented to you last week?
Any thoughts on that? Either one of you?
I do feel like we need to increase the line.
He hasn't gone up in.
No, I believe the information I gave, yeah, he hasn't gone up since he started.
Yep.
Yep.
And you don't need to tell me on the spot, but we need a number before this workshop coming up.
Okay.
So if you can start getting that. The only other one, Ed, you were, Michelle said she was waiting for a number from you, something about contacting the Waterboro Chief.
Oh, that was for, yep, that's for the.
The dams, was that the dams?
Nope, the towers.
Oh, the towers, yeah.
Yep.
And then, that last dam meeting, I know you attended, do we have any final numbers as far as what we're moving forward?
There hasn't been any other discussion or meeting since then.
So unfortunately, that's another one that we need a number.
I think we have a half a second, I can tell you when the next meeting is, and that way I can get an idea. Thought we had scheduled a dam meeting. I don't see it in the, I don't see it in my list, so. I'll, maybe we can send out an email to Sanford. Town manager.
Mr. Buck.
Yep, that, or there's a, the Chairman of the Dam Committee.
Mr. Legere.
Yes, yep. So, okay. Any other discussion on budgets?
Everybody's in.
Okay. EMA Director, 911 Operator, Job Description.
So you asked me in the workshop hours if I had started advertising this yet, and I said no, because I was really looking for some guidance. I think that it's, you know, we really need to put together a job description. As easy as it is to say, you know, we need somebody to serve on the Warrant and Finance, that's something we can easily explain what that person's going to do, but as far as the EMA and the E911, I think it's a little different. So I was hoping to pull some surrounding towns' job descriptions for you to review next week, and also want to have a conversation with Code Enforcement regarding the E911, and see what piece, if any, they can pick up, because I know they had mentioned them before, it being easier if they just did it themselves.
Right. Right, because basically, all the 911 Coordinator was doing was just reviewing paperwork and signing off, I believe.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it was a lot involved there, so, but the EMA Director, there's a fair amount to do there, so.
And possibly, I guess I'd have to double check the statute if they have to be residents or not. I don't know if there's a surrounding town that may be easier to, you know, pick up more than one, but I just need a little more time on that one.
Yep.
Okay.
Chain Bill Cutting Edges.
Last week you asked me to find out if any cutting edges had been paid out to either Road Commissioner since July 1, and the answer is no. So July 1 to December 31st of 18, the town has not paid out any cutting edges.
Great, that's good to hear.
To the prior two, we have paid the current.
Yep, that's good to hear. Okay, thank you.
And regarding the chain, a couple of weeks ago, the Board approved splitting the cost of the chain for one of the Road Commissioners. We had a taxpayer come forward, asked for a legal opinion as to whether or not that could be done, and with your permission, we double-checked with legal, and they said that based on the way the warrant article is written, we should not have paid that, because that's essentially what the sander fee that you pay, the $10 per hour for the sander, that goes to the cost of repairing the chain, so.
Sure.
We've spoken to the Treasurer and pulled that payment back.
Okay, yep, the payment never actually hit the, hit the hands of the person that was going to get it, so, okay.
So that's taken care of.
Yep. Okay, good. Let's see, new business. Jeff Donahue's Concerns.
He emailed me and asked me to put him on the agenda, I do not see him here.
Okay, we will move on. Okay, 146-025, Right to Redemption Letter.
So the town has gone through the foreclosure process on anybody with outstanding 2016 taxes. Unfortunately, we have one property that did not pay. Past practice from the Selectmen have been to send what they call a Right to Redemption Letter to the property owner. In order to stop the foreclosure, they had to pay just their 2016 taxes. This letter essentially says that we'll give you 30 days to get the property deeded back in your name by paying off all the taxes and the administration fees. So this is a letter that has been drafted to the property owner. Attached, excuse me, attached is all of the original deeds, liens, transfers, everything, so if we could just keep it together. We are having, this one will run in the newspaper as well, because if you look at the last couple of pages, we don't have a good address for them. We've reached out to everybody, people on the street, people with similar names, we've done a couple of different searches at the registry. I believe it's a trustee of someone that's deceased.
Okay, we don't read names on these, so.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I don't think we ever have in the past.
Yep.
So let's see. This is to advise you, the period granted to you by the law for the redemption of the property tax mortgage lien for 2016 tax unpaid real estate known as MAP 146 Lot 025, located at 113 Avenue A in the Town of Acton, has expired. The inhabitants of the Town of Acton now have title to the property described above by virtue of automatic foreclosure for the lien recorded in York County Deeds Book 17539, page 493. Lean ripened on February 16th, 2019. Bottom line, it says the taxes amount are $7,761.93 to be paid by March 19th. Certified check, money order, or cash. What is your wishes?
I'll make a motion to sign the redemption letter, letter of redemption for MAP 146 Lot 025.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, to sign the letter. Any further discussion? This is the part that I hate the most about this job. I say that every year, because we usually end up with one. Okay, all in favor, all opposed.
So as stated in the letter, the town essentially owns the property now, so we will put it on the insurance immediately. In the past, the Board hasn't changed locks or taken any further action until the Right to Redemption period has gone by, but that's certainly your call.
Okay.
Anybody who lives down near Avenue A and thinks they might have some contacts for some of your neighbors, give me a call or see me afterwards.
Address is 113 Avenue A. Thanks. Okay, well, let's back up a few steps here and go to the Department Heads and Committee Chairs Rec Committee. Welcome.
Nice of you to join us.
You threw me off last week.
Oh, you knew, you knew you were scheduled.
I was just looking for an update on the rec.
Yes, what you're doing.
Yeah, just how things are going.
Good, the ice rink's going well, little bit of work to keep it clear, but it's worth it. Baseball signups are out. We ordered baseball equipment, I'm not sure if it's in yet.
Yep, she, he met her here, actually, and they unloaded it all in the fitness center.
Okay.
Yeah, you've just tipped the mic up.
Why don't you give them a little idea of what it takes to keep that rink capable?
We first started shoveling it off in sections, and then I have use of a snow blower now, so we actually pick up the snow blower and put it on the rink and blow it off. Kind of speeds things up from four hours a night to 45 minutes.
So after you get all the snow off it, do you have to put more water on it and scrape it down, or?
No, we just bring up buckets. I drive up with probably 20 gallons of water and just kind of fill in the cracks and divots and stuff like that, and let it freeze, and the way the weather's been going, it actually helps us if we, when we clear it off, it rains usually after, so it kind of helps.
How is the little bonfire going in the snack shack?
Good, we've had like two fires last week, I didn't start it because the wind picked up a little, and the week before it was too windy. We've had donations of hot chocolate, and people have dropped like cookies and stuff off, so it's, it's been nice.
Kids look like they're having a good time.
Yeah, no one's gotten hurt yet, so that's a bonus as well.
Yeah, keep it that way.
I've driven by a few times and saw people using it, not necessarily on a Saturday, but, you know, during the week.
Yeah, I've heard reports, people have been out there and skating during the week and stuff like that, so it's, it's working.
Getting used, yeah.
Yeah, it's worth the headache.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. I think the kids look like they're having fun.
Are you bowling?
I think Jonathan is, too. According to the videos on Facebook.
Yeah.
How are your, how's your ice skate inventory? Because I know I've gotten a couple of calls about people wanting to donate skates.
We have, right now, we have four pairs, I believe, so we're still in need.
People can borrow.
Yeah, so we're.
Any particular size, looking for more kids, adults, and do you have places to store them if people start coming in with them?
Yeah, we've been storing them in the snack shed and stuff like that, so we do have a place to keep them.
Good.
And, yeah, we could use probably both kids and adults.
Do we have many people that are being turned away, that, because they don't have skates?
No, not really, everybody that's come down has had skates, so, and we have music and stuff there as well. And bowling is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Oh, bowling.
Yes.
Glow and Bowl?
Not really sure.
We're going, we're going tomorrow.
You're going?
Oh, yes.
And baseball signups, I heard that, I think it was Lisa mentioned, she might do something here at the Town Hall one Thursday night.
I believe so, yes.
So, and those forms went home with the kids, too?
Yes, they all went out just before school break, so, and I think we're going to do like skills and drills before that in the gym at the school, so.
Guys are doing great things.
Good, yeah, it's working well.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, back down to new business. Warrant for the special town meeting, 3619.
Okay, so the last, our last meeting, we talked about, we wanted to move forward with this. I did contact the school, and Wednesday, the 6th, is open for the school, so we've reserved it for, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock or whenever it ends. This is just a draft, you know, though I just had a phone conversation with the attorney trying to kind of tie this in and still give him a chance to maybe reply tomorrow, but the way that it's worded now, to see if the town will vote to change the position of the two Road Commissioners from elected to appointed effective July 1st, 2019, for terms of up to three years each. So this guarantees that it's still two Road Commissioners, and it allows you to stagger them if you so choose.
Yep, okay.
We're going to need to sign this next week, so if you have any changes, I need to know. And Warrant and Finance has scheduled a meeting for next Monday at 6 o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
6 o'clock to make a recommendation, so we need to have a draft over to them as well. So if you could think about it and give me a call if anything changes.
Okay, Capital Improvement Committee.
Ms. Kimberly asked me to put this on the agenda, she thought it might be time to start thinking about.
Please elaborate.
Well, actually, I've been talking with Michelle a little bit about it, and she's the one that suggested, she really feels it's time that we do this, to try to start putting some money, you know, away for projects that need to be done in the future. So, I don't really.
So are you looking for people to serve on a committee?
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to need to do.
And are you looking for them to look townwide?
Yeah.
Whether it be the Town Hall building, the transfer station, roads, I mean, you want them to look at kind of everything?
Roads has Roads Committee, do you, do you think that would be something?
Well, I mean, the Road Committee and the Selectmen and the Road Commissioners can certainly create a capital improvement account, start putting money away for whatever they, you know, so you could do it, I mean, the bridges is definitely something you're going to think about.
Right, I mean, the bridges is like one of the big things, and yes, like here, you know, whether it's heating systems or, I said, you know, the bridges are something that's important, but also, you know, our buildings, you know, everything that we need to take care of in this town. Like down at the sand and salt shed, we've got a roof down there that leaks, and just different things, you know, that come up that we may, it would be nice to have money put aside for.
I was thinking the kitchen, it, it's, it's a great home for rodents right now, and I think that it could be updated, in addition to the quality of water that comes out of the tap needs to be addressed.
There's a lot of different things that I think we need to start thinking about, so yeah.
Do you want me to advertise and see if we can?
Yeah, see if we get any interest of people that might want to, you know, serve on it to kind of, I guess, get a checklist going of, I know, you know, each.
How many people do you think on the board, five?
I was thinking five.
Five is your standard number, yeah.
Yeah, five would be nice, at least.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea to move forward with it, but at the same time, we're so close to budgets, if there's anything specific, we're not going to be able to wait for the committee, so you're going to want to start coming up with your ideas now so we can put them within the warrant.
Okay.
Sounds good, because I think we only have, we have one capital account right now.
Right, we only have one, right?
So your dams, dams or bridges?
Fire trucks.
Oh, fire trucks.
That's the only one, that's the only one we have, so, yep, okay, no, I think it's a great idea, so. Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Sanford Regional Communications.
So we have an agreement draft that was sent over from Sanford Regional Communications, an agreement between the City of Sanford and Town of Acton. I did email it to you, it's a standard contract, just like, similar to the one that you signed in the past. The difference is that this one is going up by 13%. It says that over the past years, we've conducted wage-price comparisons, and they feel like their wages are below average, and they're going to be increasing an average of 13%. That's why you see the increase on your contract. So it's Sanford Dispatch.
Yep.
And that would be for the next fiscal year, but it gives Michelle something to budget. You're welcome to take and review it, you don't have to sign it tonight.
So you're saying this would be effective July 1st?
Right.
Okay.
They run on a fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep, July 1st, we'll be paying $21,404.54, and if you look, it goes up over the next five years, so it's $21,000 now, and five years out, which would be 2023, it'll be up to $26,017.38, so. So 21, 22, 23, 24, and then it takes a jump to 26, so, anyway, I mean, I know we can't do it any cheaper, so. And that's 911 calls, plus all the fire dispatch, ambulance dispatch, everything that's handled through emergency services, so. Actually, I think they dispatch the Sheriff's Department as well.
Yes, they do.
Yep, okay. Okay. Do you want to look it over, or do you want to?
If that's what we're going with, we don't.
I mean, there is no other option, right?
No.
There really is no other option.
And I've started a while ago, and.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Had some time to ponder it.
Everything's kind of going up, minimum wage, things are going up, so.
Yep.
All right, well then.
I mean, I can make a motion, make a motion to sign the agreement between the City of Sanford and the Town of Acton for, what's the?
911 Dispatch.
911 Dispatch.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Do we need to wait, we've got to have it signed by July 1st, do we need to wait until after town meeting?
You can, it's, it's up to you. You can either way, I mean, if the money's not appropriated, you're not paying it either way, so.
Right, exactly.
Either way, it's fine.
So we could sign this anyway and just have it.
Right.
Sitting ready to go, okay. Yeah, in essence, you can hang on to it until town meeting?
So the Treasurer put together a workshop for March 16th. She's used the same format that we've used in the past. Generally, we start with the transfer station at 9, the Department Head needs to get back over there, cable at 9:15, fire rescue at 9:30, 10 o'clock with the roads, 10:30 with the rec department, 10:45 Conservation and Forestry, 11 o'clock Cemetery, 11:15 would be Health and Welfare, Dams and Public Safety, and then at 11:30, we would start the General Government, which is everything else. So with your approval, we'll get that submitted, and the Department Heads can mark their calendars.
Sounds good.
And we'll notify Warrant and Finance.
Anything else on that?
The only thing I remember from last year is people didn't seem to think the roads had enough time.
Okay, so we have a half hour for two of them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know why, did anybody else here, do anybody else remember that?
I don't.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with it, but that's just, I thought what I remembered.
Right, so I guess it's going to, it's going to be how much we put into it prior to, I mean, once we get the budgets from the gentlemen, and we get those dispersed to Warrant and Finance and yourselves, and see what kind of changes or recommendations, I mean, generally, you guys meet with them first to try to make sure that you're on the same page, but it's really just to go through and outline their budget.
Okay.
And if anybody has any specific concerns or roads, I would think they would reach out to them in advance, but I mean, we can structure it out.
I think it was Warrant and Finance, because they had more questions.
Than for the roads?
And I feel like if they have further questions, they can call them back, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
And I think there was a few issues last year, so.
And what do we decide about Social Services, since we're talking about the budget? Do we know if Warrant and Finance wants to meet with Social Services? Mr. Waterhouse?
If there are new applicants, then we would like to vet them, but as far as previous applicants, I don't see any need to go through another vetting process.
And the Board of Selectmen agree with that, as far as you guys?
They would, yeah, yeah, yeah. You okay with that?
Yep.
Yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Public comment, anyone from the public have anything they'd like to bring up?
Last slipper land. At last week's meeting, there was, we discussed a little bit about the, changing the auditor, and as a taxpayer, I feel that we should be changing our auditors every five years, and the Board seemed to be thinking that that wasn't necessary because it wasn't illegal for them to not change. We all know that things are legal but are still a bad idea, so I had a spare 20 minutes that I took to do a little bit of research, and one of the first things that popped up was a study done by Ernst &amp; Young, which is one of the top accounting firms in the country. accounting firms in the country. Now, this was a 33-page document and a study that they did on audit firm rotation.
And what were they auditing, municipalities?
There was municipalities and there was public companies. They also, there was, they also did the United States, they did other countries also, so it was really comprehensive. I'd like to share some of the things I found and there were some other organizations that I'll share with you also, what I found. Now, this is from Ernst &amp; Young in their study. Audit rotation imposes periodic breaks of auditor and client and is intended to avoid excessively long periods between them, which is believed to damage the quality of the audit. It enhances audit-client independence, which is closely linked to audit quality. When the same audit firm carries out its services for a long period of time, it may fall into a sort of professional routine. The auditor may be tempted to rely increasingly on previous audit tests and may overlook certain accounting areas that had been considered as correct in previous audits, thus potentially missing material errors, errors and mistakes. And it goes on, as time passes, auditors begin to unconsciously feel as part of the client management team, this may impede the auditor from impartially assessing the transparency and reliability of clients' accounts. Moreover, a long-term relationship between a single audit firm and an auditee may cause reasonable people to conclude the auditor would not be capable of acting without bias, thus impacting the appearance of independence. The American Accounting Association says on auditor firm rotation, years of employment may negatively affect the audit quality if it reflects management entrenchment, which is called audit firm complacency. Governing.com, which does deal exclusively with municipalities, they recommend, and I'm not necessarily recommending this, an independent audit committee as someone should audit the government auditors. As public finance becomes ever more complex, even small governments need a competent, vigilant, independent and expansive voice to make sure the public money is managed prudently. And one last thing from tax auditors, as to what a municipality should require from their auditing firm, they need a statement of audit firm's qualifications along with the copy, a copy of the firm's peer review letter and a letter of finding, if any. These must be clean. And the audit firm must be a member of the Government Audit Quality Center, which is established by the American Institute of CPAs. So I think we need to really think about what we're doing and not just say, because we're not required, we're not going to do it.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Mann. I totally agree with her. I do think that if you're going to put it out to bid, that the current company should be not a part of this. You really should look at a new auditor. It's recommended, and I know you said it's not the law, it's recommended, but I can give you many examples of things that were recommended that were never the law, things like women couldn't vote. Thank goodness, we can vote now. Things like kids could drive in the back of an open truck. I think we all know that's a bad idea. Now it's the law. So saying because it's not the law is not a reason to not change the auditor. You've had the same auditor, from what I can tell, 14 years. It's way overdue. And I know you're thinking, well, a different accountant will be looking at it. It's not a different accounting company. They will not be insulted, they do it all the time, they get rotated all the time. You really need to reconsider. It's your job to make sure that you're taking care of the taxpayers' money, and I'd appreciate it if you would consider that.
Definitely consider it, so.
I don't think we, didn't say we wouldn't consider it.
No, we didn't.
No, we just, I mean, I know another town, one of our neighboring towns pays $4,000 more using a different company, so, I mean, that's one thing I'd look at, but.
Joyce Bakshi, different subject, but to go on what you just said, when you put something out to bid, even if you leave the, our current auditor out of it, you're still going to go with what I would presume to think you would look at who is the best at the best price. I mean, I sort of grew up learning that you get three prices on anything, you know, you need a plumber. You throw away the most expensive one and you throw away the cheapest one and you go with the guy in the middle, as long as he is a plumber and he's a licensed plumber, you get the best for your money.
Yep.
But, this, when you were talking about the capital investment plan, as you know, I'm chairman of the planning board, and we've been doing some work on the comprehensive plan and going back and doing research for it, I have come across the, this was in with the comp plan, comprehensive plan implementation schedule review. It was done by a committee of Mr. Cashin, Mrs. Dunle, Randy Goodwin, John Moore, Richard Neal, Joe Ruma and Doug, I don't have my glasses on. Thank you, thank you. April 10th, 16 years ago. So, under capital improvement, and it might just be something you can, it's a skeleton or a patent you can use. It has a list of things that, you know, they're talking about, and the one that jumped out on at me, because it really took my breath away, it said sometime between 2001 and 2010, we should talk about putting a addition on the school. That's big money capital improvement, but this is broken down, I think, rather nicely in that it, there's mid-cost, high-cost and mid-high cost. So I'm sure you must have this in your files with your comp plan, so it is there. It would be a good starting place. Some of the things on this, because of the age, have been done, you know, repair, improvements on old Route 109. Well, Sam Page has had work done on it, we know that. I couldn't say if it needs more, I don't know, but we know it's done. But there are all signs, all kinds of things on this that I think you'd find helpful. It's a starting place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have, yeah. Yeah, maybe you can get a copy of that and have it.
It's in the comp plan, we have copies in my office.
Do we know who's going to, like, off of this board, who's going to be spearheading that?
I'd like to, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm not saying no. Wouldn't, wouldn't the department head know better than a committee to know what they're looking down the line for, like the fire department for a fire truck or SBAs or whatever, the transfer station for a new, than a committee that don't know nothing about their department? Wouldn't?
I would hope that the committee would entertain the department head to come in and have that discussion.
Yeah.
Give them the information?
Yeah, the committee basically is just to compile everything.
And kind of pick out which one's going to go first and which one's going to go second.
No, just to kind of get it all together.
Get it all together, okay? I would just think that.
Yeah, they would.
That would be more.
Well, they'd go to the fire department, they'd go to the transfer station, you know, what do you, what do you need, what do you have for plans, what's, how old are these pieces of equipment and, yeah, that's how I would see it.
That's what I thought, too. You know, you work with them to see, you know, what they need, what we need to start saving for in each department, buildings, whatever, and kind of.
You've already done that.
Yep.
Yep, nope.
Good. Any other public comments? Nope, okay. Announcements, meetings are online as usual. The RFP for auditing services is available, it's gone out, so, that's all I got. Anything from the library side?
Nancy from Families First, well, she was formerly from Families First till they did away with that program, but she's coming tomorrow with the parachute for my story and activity hour from 10 to 11, which will interfere with bowling. This is more for infants and up to preschool age.
Yep.
For the younger ones.
That's good. No, anything else? Anything else, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'll second it. All in favor? Night all.